Okay. How does it seem to you? Take a moment for now, but then we are on closer number four of the patient. Director at Core, we have four, Blue Island. And if you cannot go in there, you're not going to be able to serve Dr. Ruffin. You left him over there. Okay, okay. I'll do that. I'll close it for you. All right. We will begin with our opening role policy December.
Good evening. Mr. Ramirez, your president. Is the guest here?
Here.
Tosey Roll? Martinez?
Here.
Is the Guinness?
Here.
Is the Martin?
Here.
To reply in the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. Okay. Yeah, but you can just kind of leave it to the board. I can't suggest that. I'll do the release and I'll decide. Okay, so here now, if you feel like you're desperate, please stop and send in those one sheet at the chat table. Do you feel bad at current behavior in the time are not protected from the legal library? Reminding board and how to respond to or engage with individuals who do not make public comments. Or deserve the rights to be in and when the public comments in the exercise is what we're doing here. So if there's no comments, I'm going to give you minutes. The total is more than thirty minutes. A lot of public comments. We have the whole comment community separately and in the moment that we're not expecting. So that said, we would invite our first speaker. When you're ready.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ana Guajardo, the Centro de Trabajadores Unidos, United Workers Center. Thank you for having me. I'm sorry, this is my employee that was supposed to be here, but we got lost getting here. Just wanted everyone to know here in Blue Island that our organization has been working for many years with some of the organizations here in churches. We provide predominantly labor work, education. So we're here just so everyone knows that we have an after-school program that was formed with Corazon a Corazon, which is a community organization here. So we're providing after-school services. It's hundred percent free. We're also providing a hall for the children. It's two hours every Wednesday at Corazon a Corazon. And so throughout the school year, we have after-school programs that vary from actual physical sports. We're also teaching the children how to cook and bake and I believe also art. And so we just wanted to let everyone know that this is a new program that we're bringing to Blue Island. And if we get enough, I guess, willingness for parents to bring their children to the program, they were already expanded for next year. But this is part of the Department of DHS, which is a program in the states that allows for the after-school programs. This is an anti-violence initiative. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Yes. Are you looking at that employee number comments? Do any members of the board have any comments?
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you to the principals throughout our district for sending the weekly parent newsletter. It's nice to see what's happening in our schools. I also wanted to thank them for taking the time to review and analyze the data from their school and provide the PBIS reports that we read. I've been paying attention to the attendance piece in the newsletter as well as the PBIS reports. Attendance still seems to be an issue of concern. And I cannot help but wonder if it's part of, you know, part of that is due to the state of our nation, specifically the ice raids that are occurring in and around our area. So my question is, what is our district doing to keep our students and staff safe? And I also want to ask if eLearn is a possibility for those students and the parents that are generally afraid?
So we have given guidance to our building leaders as to how to respond if somebody comes to the school in that regard, in not accepting children without a judicial warrant and those kinds of things. We have not yet anybody come to any of our school sites. And our principals have done a nice job of making sure that there's enough staff outside to help any dismissal and ride over that. Parents feel safe. I know that Lincoln, they are walking students to the car. But to make sure that people are not as long as they're on the side. Nick, as far as eLearning or remote reading, the state is not supporting that at this time as we're doing this on recording. If anything changes in that, I will send out a announcement. But at this point, we don't have an organization to do that. But we do have access to eLearning days that we can use so many reporters or support with weather when we're open. So through certain issues, there are, I think, some of the present to see. And obviously, the original system.
Thank you.
It's obviously a change in day to day, so.
Thank you.
Are there any other board members comments? Okay, so we're going to move on to the commentations and definitions. First, obviously, the number twenty-three, I just know the definition. I will refer this to the office to middle and then to the double cell.
The Department of Special Education would like to recognize Kim DiMario and Pam Van Aken for their ongoing dedication and exceptional support of students across the district. Kim DiMario is one of our school nurses who not only fulfills her building level of responsibilities, but also coordinates state reporting requirements to the Illinois State Board of Education, including vaccination, compliance, vision, hearing, and technical screenings. Both Pam Van Aken and Kim DiMario play key roles in onboarding and training all new nurses in district procedures, the SNAP Health Management System, and the completion of evaluations related to IEPs and 504s. They also lead district-wide CPR, anaphylaxis, and stops of LEAD trainings. They provide expert consultation to less experienced teams and actively contribute to collaborative problem solving within their schools. Their leadership, professionalism, and commitment exemplify the excellence in community spirit that define Cook County School District 130. We're grateful to have them. Thank you so very much. Okay, there's more. Additionally, the Special Education Department would like to also recognize Janice Castillo and Billy Reyes for their invaluable contributions to the pupil personnel services department. They provide essential supports for the daily operations of IEP management, record keeping, and early intervention to early childhood transitions, home bounce services, and other critical functions. Beyond their administrative expertise, Janice and Billy also played vital roles in some more reporting and communication across our district. They assist coordinators and families by providing interpretation services for Spanish-speaking families and share access and understanding for all. Their efforts help strengthen relationships, promote inclusivity, and foster a greater sense of community among our students, families, and staff. We are so grateful for that. Not unlike the hair commercial, they're not only employees of the district, but they also live in the community as well and exemplify our community spirit. We're grateful for all those members of our team. Thank you very much. You have a certificate for you. You could come up and recognize and know each other. So thank you, Kim. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Del Rosso, and I am the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
Hi, I'm Terry Campos. I am the Curriculum Coordinator for ELA and Social Studies.
And my name is Kristen Palmer, and I'm the Grants Coordinator for Curriculum Instruction.
This evening, we are proud to celebrate our district's outstanding team of instructional coaches. These dedicated professionals make countless contributions every day to support teaching and learning across our schools.
With an instructional coach in every building, along with two district instructional technology coaches, this team plays a vital role in our continuous improvement process. They lead data discussion, partner closely with teachers to address challenges, and enhance instructional practices, and help to equip our staff with new goals, strategies, and technologies that strengthen student learning and engagement. On November fourth, two thousand twenty-five, we joined educators across the country in celebrating National Instructional Coach Appreciation Day. Tonight, we proudly recognize our instructional coaches for their unwavering dedication, collaboration, and impact on both our teachers and our students.
Thank you for all you do to make teaching and learning stronger every single day. Please join me in honoring the following members of the instructional coach team. Coaches, as your name is called, please come forward for your certificate and stay standing for a formal applause at the end. Christine Berry. Sarah Caneely. Mary Drow. Deanna King. Molly Larkin. Eileen McLaughlin. Jennifer Reichardt. Sierra Russell. Kimberly Need. Yvette Disente. Kristen Wada. Karen Zabakis.
Governor, please take this School Board Members Day. It's our opportunity to thank these school board members and the Council of the Department of Education. Thank you, Council of the Department of Education and school board members today. We recognize your commitment to the district and the work we do to make the community a great place to follow home. We gather something that we feel is very clear, taking a very important fact to do. Thank you.
Can we have another curriculum teacher who looks hard behind the student board and sends some reading to the student advisory board?
Okay, before I let the kids take over, this is a reminder of the award that the students presented at last board meeting, or the idea of the award that they are going to present today. We'll view it on the screen here as the students read and kind of re-explain how students were chosen for the Group Eight Award. And then the student board members from each school will explain their nominees that they gave for the month of November.
That we will collect a Group Eight Award every month at the Board of Strategic Meeting, and this award will recognize a member from each field of school who demonstrates a positive quality.
Responsibility. Bringing the proper materials, staying on task, earning a work ethic, kindness, kind to others, have nice things to say, and hold the hand.
Respect, shows consideration towards others, polite towards staff and students, and gives everyone a chance.
Mission screening is tomorrow, everybody. Leadership, contribute to class discussions, set some example for others, increase a positive environment. Okay, I just want to give the students' heads. I sent the message out to them. They spent the time throughout the last couple weeks really trying to figure out who they wanted to nominate. Now, it is Group Eight because it is exclusive to eighth graders since the student board is made up of eighth graders. This is the way they chose the award to be. So we're appreciative that we're given this opportunity to present the award. So we will start with the award that our recipient, or that our board members from criminal school will receive that.
This award goes to Reina Martinez and for being selected by the Cook County School District 130 student advisory board to receive the Group Eight Award. Responsibility, kindness, respect, and leadership.
Next, we have the recipient from Nathan Hale.
Me and my fellow classmate, Cleo Brown, nominate Adrian Oliveras for being selected by the CCX 343 student advisory board to receive the Group Eight Award for showing responsibility, respect, leadership, and kindness towards other students.
We will make sure that she gets her award. Thank you all. We will present another award in December, so who knows who it will be?
This might also test my vision tonight, so I may just scooch a little bit. Good evening. This is only for reading, not for business. My name is Alma Cano. I'm the Director of Early Childhood, and my birth-to-friend program had the opportunity to have, to attend a conference for the Parents as Teachers International Conference Health in San Juan, Puerto Rico. So I'm going to share with you all what we gathered from this experience and then what our next steps are going to be. So first, I wanted to talk a little bit about the purpose of this annual conference. It is an international conference. So just like every conference, really, we're looking to, they're looking to enhance our professional knowledge on home visiting and supporting families, improve program effectiveness. So there was a lot around how do we improve compliance, the area compliance, networking. I said it was an international conference, so we were able to speak with other people in other states and countries. And then celebrate the Blue Ribbon Award. Yes, I'll just put my hair back. Because what is the Blue Ribbon Award? The Blue Ribbon Award is a designation from the Parents as Teachers Organization for its affiliates that are considered exemplary for providing high-quality services to families. Now, this is an entire process that takes a whole year to complete. And it includes meeting the twenty essential requirements, which we did, completing a comprehensive self-assessment, which was long, and meet or exceed at least eighty percent of the eighty-one quality standards. We met at ninety percent. So really, it's looking for fidelity. Are we being true to what the curriculum says? And we did our work and we were recipients of this Blue Ribbon Award. So a few conference highlights. We were there for four days. Well, the conference was four days. We were there a few days before and after. There were over ninety sessions to choose from. There were approximately eighteen hundred participants or attendees at this conference. Very, very big space. And then, like I said before, they're international. They have affiliates in all fifty states and then six countries as well. The sessions were available in English and in Spanish, and if you didn't make it into a session, like a couple times, they filled up and they didn't let us in, you can livestream. So you still were able to participate. And the bonus is, we still have access to all of those sessions. So obviously, we had to follow a specific schedule that we chose ourselves. But if we wanted to be at one, but it's happening simultaneously, we have access to it now. And then, as a team together, we attended over forty different sessions. There were six of us that were there, so we all received different information that we came back and talked about. So this is where my vision will get tested. So these are the areas that they had the different sessions. So advanced home health, community engagement, collaboration and partnership, community responsiveness, health and wellness, parenting, and child development, power in play, hands-on skill building, and then program implementation and management, research and data-driven practices. And I found out in the airport coming back that I was actually a presenter in one of the sessions. We were asked to give our input or like tips on how to get through that entire process. So I recorded myself back in July, and I sent in my video, and they picked my video. So I was in one of those sessions giving people tips who didn't even know it. So all together, I tried to consolidate what we, like, what areas did we cover? Really, we, I did a lot of training under psychological safety with families and staff, understanding the sensory system in children, safety for the home visitors. They're going into families' homes. They're driving into all of our neighborhoods, all four of our neighborhoods. Community building, how do we connect with the, with the community to enhance our programs? And how do we engage families continuously? Another session was really focusing on strengths, because right now, it's really easy to find all of the struggles, all the things that are very difficult. So if we can find the strengths in a family and build up from there, we're winning. Maternal depression is a thing, so we did some learning on that. Increasing father engagement, and then domestic violence, integrating literacy across all personal visits. And then, there was a full session on why we're seeing more challenging behaviors in children. Really, really engaging. Big highlight, we were recognized as the Blue Ribbon Award recipients. One of the super cool that we didn't realize is that many of us had milestone years. So they had another backup where if you'd been working with this Parents as Teachers curriculum, you could take your milestone picture. So each of us had a different milestone. So I've had staff who've been doing this for twenty-five years, ten years, twenty years, fifteen years, and in that ten-year category. And so that was super exciting for us. How it aligned to the strategic plan, it really revolved around climate and culture for a number of reasons, right? So we, what my staff took away from this and what I took away from this is that they have access to a ton of professional development like that. They have to complete twenty hours every year to keep, to keep working in their positions. We do this all virtually. All of our training is virtually. And this time, being in person and being in spaces, connected the whole group. It, I think they came back like and figured it, like, wow, these are things that we can try and hear in new ways that we can enhance our program. So looking at our strategic plan, those are the two goals that we really connected with. And then, lastly, the theme of the conference was called Reach New Heights. Alcanzar nuevas alturas. And so how we're going to reach new heights? We are looking at doing a, creating a postpartum mom group. So last year, we had a ton of prenatal mamas. They've had their babies, and we know the fourth trimester is a real thing, right? And so how do we support our postpartum mamas? Movement is a great way. So we're looking at ways to have a walking mom club. And then transitioning our birth-to-three kiddos into pre-K. So how do we create a group for our two-and-a-half-year-olds that are coming to pre-K so that they're ready for pre-K? Some of our parents have already start, parent educators have already started updating and changing out information in our activities that we take home to the families. And then there was this really neat PAT Engage app that really helps the parent educators lock everything into, into that app and communicate with families. And then, of course, we're always looking for ways to increase parent involvement or father involvement in our, in our program. So amazing, amazing experience. And we're thankful that we were allowed to attend. That is it. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'm moving too fast. Because, you know, I don't like speaking in front of people, but I pick a job that makes me do it every day. So I am the principal here at Horace Mann, and I'm going to kind of lead you through a brief presentation about our program. I lead the program with our wonderful director, Alma Cano, who you just heard from. The presentation is going to just talk about our current work, the program structure, and then accomplishments that we have over the last three years, and then the direction in which we're trying to go. So Horace Mann proudly serves two hundred students in a half-day program. Our program consists, consists of six blended classrooms and two early childhood self-contained special education classrooms. Within those class, our blended classrooms, we have students with and without special needs. Our sessions are AM and PM. Our teacher teams consist of an early childhood educator, a special education teacher, parent professionals, and our therapist. They collaborate together to promote an inclusive environment and shared learning for all of our students. In this last few years, we've had our students, and we focused a lot on their social-emotional development and our collaboration and partnership with families. So that is embedded in our program. Our curriculum and assessment. So we use a creative curriculum, and that curriculum is grounded in the Early Illinois Learning Standards. And so we are intentional about our work. It focuses on the whole child, so their social-emotional development, cognitive development.
It focuses on the whole child. So their social-emotional development, cognitive development, physical development, language development, and math and literacy. The lessons that the students teach, and you'll be able to see that in the video at the end, is all hands-on and is centered around curiosity and exploration, which I thoroughly enjoy. The curriculum also allows for our teachers to do whole group, small group, and individual lesson planning. So all of that is in their lesson planner. Teaching Strategy Goals, Gold is a platform that we use. We use that data to then, they take in doda notes, photos, they put that in a platform, and then they use that information to then track our students' progress. And so every three times a year, the parents come in to get a report to talk about how their child is progressing in all of those areas. So continuous growth and improvement. So for the last three years, since I've been here, we've worked to do a couple of things. First thing is, we've tried to streamline the processes to improve instruction and class efficiency. We have enhanced our inclusive practices to make sure that it is equitable learning for all of our students. We've also looked at our data, because as we all know, our children are coming in with more needs. And so we looked at our data and we took that data to then plan our professional development and improve our programming. And we worked hand-in-hand with our director to make sure that everything that we do is including every single child in this program. And then we've strengthened our focus on student regulation and trauma-informed practices. And with that, we have also learned and studied more about co-regulation, because we four five-year-olds can't regulate. Adults don't learn to regulate until they're 25. So for our most current PD, which was Monday, which was great, we worked on breathing and breathwork with the teachers, and then movement, and the importance of how they can then co-regulate with our students. So it was a great day. And this year, or last year, we adopted the Honeybee as our mascot. You saw her when you came in. So the Honeybee embodies the hard work that we do here at Horace Mann. So the teachers here, the parent professionals, they work tirelessly and they are dedicated to taking care of our students. The hive is our community, and in this community, we build unity, joy, and a sense of belonging. There is a debate on what we're going to name the Honeybee. The director doesn't like Harriet. I do. So we're still deciding on that, and I think we should involve other people in the conversation. Because it's just me and her. Also, to go back, we have also incorporated an incremental health consultant who works with our parent educators to then create a bridge from the classroom to our parents. And our incremental health consultant is now working with our parent educators. And during our parent-teacher conferences, we have now involved the parent educators to help our parents with what they need in the classroom. So to support us in the classroom and help their children at home. So we got a lot of celebrating to do. Over the last two years, two years, we've graduated four Honeybee classes. We have two graduating in November. We got the gold circle of quality. We have built a culture that is always focused on including every student. And we leaned in this last year to cultivating joy as a staff, and importance in how that impacts our daily work. We are going to continue to build our parent-school partnerships through programs like Honeybee University. We have grown our student outcomes and engagement. We also enhanced the playground. So our playground receives shading, so we can use it all year round. We also installed a communication board for our students who need visuals to communicate, so they can go over and tell their teacher what they want from the communication board, which is so special. You'll see that in the video. We also added playground surfacing to support all of our students. So we have the mulch, but it was hard for our students who have mobility concerns and they need more support. And so we have now a surface for everyone to have access to the playground. And we added these sensory walls here, and there's one there for our students who need that sensory input when they're in the gym. And we added trampolines for self-regulation, which would be half the time. I mean, the max. Sorry. So looking ahead, we are planning to expand our family education through the Honeybee University. Today, we met with our instructional leadership team, which is a phenomenal group of women here, and we talked about how we can create more moments, because some people can't commit to the 10 weeks. So we call them like a taste of honey. They came over there a while ago, which I thought was real clever. So we'll have a taste of honey, like these maybe smaller 30-minute sessions that parents can come in and get more information about things that they may want to know from our parent educators, from myself, from Ms. Cano, about things that may help them with their children at home. We're going to deepen our SEL and student regulation practices. We're going to continue to always look at our data and to improve our instructional practices. We're going to maintain and build upon our gold circle of quality. And this year, when I first came, we looked at our mission and vision, and we want to realign it with our current work and then align it with the districts to make sure that we do what we know is best for children, and that is reflected in everything that we do. And then we're going to continue to collaborate and develop a healthier work-life balance. That's really hard for educators. And so we want to talk about streamlining our procedures and processes to make it so it's not such a heavy weight. Being a pre-K teacher having 43 four and five-year-olds is a lot. So that's where I'm moving in the next couple of years. And I want to thank the Board of Education for their support of the Early Childhood Program, and thank all of you all and the families for everything that you do. And then there's this wonderful video that I'm going to show you next. So my first year here at Horace Mann was a little bit of a culture shock, solely because the staff, when you open the doors, is like walking into this place of belonging. And when the kids walk in, it's like, good morning, where's my daughter? And I was like, oh, this is nice. So they, the video is going to try, it's hard to show that. You have to come and see. But the staff here is great. The kids always feel welcome. If they're transitioning, because they're having a hard time, they don't want to leave their parents, everybody wraps around them to give them what they need. So hopefully, you'll be able to see that in the video.
Hi, my name is Nancy. I am one of the parents here at Horace Mann. I have a graduate. She's a kindergarten mom, and I have a little girl who's in this school. I'm very happy to be here for her this year. I'm here as well. So I'm very happy with the school. I love that we communicate. The parent app has been great. I communicate with her teaching support anytime. She's very willing to come back, not only to teach her, but also to go to her everything here. It's parent-oriented, student-oriented. So I love being here. I love coming. I feel like I'm part of their family. When I have any questions, they always answer my questions. All of the staff here is very understanding. And they communicate very, very well. And my daughter's learning. She's learning from the classroom. She's learning to socialize. She's learning to be other kids, and the teachers are just helping with that. So we love it.
One more thing. So I don't know if you saw the people singing in the parking lot. So that's how dedicated the staff is. They missed her birthday. They called her before she left to go sing happy birthday to her before she left. And one of our parent educators decided to record it, and I thought it was a great moment to show what the staff, how dedicated they are to our students. Thank you.
I'm not going to rely on my eyes. Actually, I'm here today for this process, and then I'm going to invite Dr. Lulmo, the director of ETS, Mr. Phil Shea, director of Stone and Brown, and Detective Heidi Haldor, director of technology to assist with the technology, and all of the others to create this presentation. So the government framework in regards to vendor selection, the current vendor selection, all of the forms, the policy for each for older than 60, purchase in contract. The district shall manage the district's purchases and contracts in accordance with state law. The standard set forth in this policy and other applicable court policies. All purchases in contract shall be entered into in accordance with applicable federal and state law. Court determinants shall also be consulted as needed regarding legal requirements. All contracts shall be approved or authorized by the board. So the segment, the process in regards to how we get into contracts with different vendors here in the district. A lot of items that we have to consider, if we're having to meet, that court policy is on the district website, and you can look it up in the district website. It is an awful reference, and like the normal code. So there's other things that pertain to how we collect vendors. Also, the other process we follow in making the proposal proposals and the qualifications. We also follow federal regulations. We can use purchasing cooperatives. We can contract it on staff services in the process for that as well, along with trying to use local vendors. So I want to have Phil come up here and talk a little bit about the bid process and the other issues.
Good evening. I'm Deloche. I'm the director of building grounds. And I want you guys to be through the process for my department, which really oversee building infrastructure and the grounds. So with this process, as Mr. Moreno explained, we use our school code and board policies to govern this. The school code is cited up there. And what we do is, we identify a need or a project, whether it's a construction project, a service, sometimes emergency repairs or equipment purchases. We develop cost estimate and the project is confirmed a budget approval. All documents compiled by a group of us, so I can say charge. I would just arrange the partner to establish standards for a budget, and then give it off to the board so they can make a informed decision. And then along the line, we develop a third scope of work or specifications. We consult our legal team. There's a public posting, so anytime there's a construction project, we work closely with our district architect. They will build a set of plans and drawings. Sometimes they assist in putting it up the bid for us, along with our construction management firm. They will put it up the bid, we get the bid back. Sometimes, not always, there are repeat activities, and sometimes a mandatory meeting depending on the scope of work. So for example, a few years ago, we did classrooms at Douglas and Morning Middle School. We invited contractors to come out and look at the site, to make sure we're getting the scope. We have opportunities for them to ask questions. We're building, make sure we know the price of the monthly plans. And then we go ahead and pick a contractor. Once we compile those lists, we select the vendor that comes to the Board of Education for approval. They're presented with options. We typically pick the top three. Always kind of looking for the lowest responsible bidder. That gives the board the option of flexibility. Let's say lowest responsible bidder, it always doesn't work out, right? Perfect example, that same project, the lowest responsible bidder, it came back and they had a bad bond, and they had bad references. We brought that back to the board. The board made a decision to afford that vendor, and we want to be excellent with those responsible contractors. Once we procure all that, the project proceeds. Along the way, there's checks in, checking along the way to make sure the project's on schedule, budgeted target. And then at the end of the project, there are submittals and reviews we go through. Again, the board is involved along the whole way in the process, and everything goes to them once you approve the board's work. So this here is kind of really for my department and how I did things out. One of the biggest things that we do is our lawn service, lawn and landscape service that our maintenance staff doesn't do in-house. We sub a proportion of that out. The snow removal and plumbing services, a portion of that is subbed out. And really, that comes down to costs on our end. Sometimes it's just less expensive for the district to farm some of that out, because they're not carrying the cost of the equipment, the workers' compensation, and the other imperative along the way to that. The revenue services, all of our garbage services subbed district. It's currently serviced by the public service that goes up the bid. It's like, do you need any? I agree. That one's a lot. We just have one this past year. There's light shady projects on there, and then capital projects and improvements. Those are typically identified by myself. If they identify by our architect, or if there's a need with the norties, you know, if we don't have, example, if we don't have enough classroom space, or we want to add a playground facility, that would be a project that we need to table. We thought, bid, and yet the contractor didn't really go through the process.
Besides going up the bid, there are exceptions from the Illinois National Code that we don't have to go out to bid for everything. So when we don't go out to bid, we do a request for proposals and a request for qualifications. It's very similar to the bid process, but that there's no, there's little variance in regards to the R and Q. So the process varies for the type of service the district is requesting. We still have to define the scope to see what kind of work we're going to be doing. We consult with legal. If you, how to show state, whether it's a legal ad, supporting it on the website, and or studying the notice to firms. For example, I think we still have the RFQ for architects. So you know, on the district website as an example, you know, but we also put it on the, as a legal ad on the local newspaper. And then also, the legal ad also delineates the actual schedule, the timeline in regards to how, what the process is in regards to the request for proposal or request for qualifications. Then we receive the vendor submissions from each entity. Then we interview the vendors and ask them questions and so forth, so specifically in regards to the architects. We had, we did a focus list, which is part of the process in regards to the school code. And we elected the faculty in regards to who we were going to interview, and we interviewed And we interviewed three firms. And ultimately, we evaluated the responses, a lot of the proposals, and the authority. And ultimately, you know, consulted legal with the information that we've received. And then we ultimately selected a firm. And then started negotiating in regards to pricing and the overall construction. And then we ultimately recommended the firm, you know, to the more affordable or educational entity we're open to in. And they approved it and awarded the contract to the firm. So as we stated earlier, you know, like, examples of bidding services of our Department of Education. We recently done the architectural firm, the special qualifications. Others, we have done that in a couple of years ago, professional managers, reasonable as well. And then we serve, we serve as more of a special proposal proposal to the other purposes that are listed up there. And it also requires a different type of process. Probably by, you know, maybe more education and, you know, all these other ones. And it's very long. And for the most part, you know, we do special proposals, qualifications, or using special services that are exempt from the process. In regards to federal regulations, there are also goals that we have to follow. And there are sole nutrition programs that I see a little bit ago. The special proposals for food service. It's not just regulations from the state, but it's also federally, there's federal regulations. And there's a legal pattern that has to be followed based on federal mandates that have been approved in the test. And we have to follow those in order to receive federal funding. And that's why the district is, has federal community eligibility provision and C D T, where all students receive a free meal. Follow those regulations and we are within the very lines to receive those funds. Now we'll bring Mr. Halder here to talk a little bit more about more federal regulations in regards to fee rate and other projects.
So, most of our projects in technical area technology are funded by the federal government. We have fee rate, which is a mission of the federal government that takes care of our internet connectivity. Now it sounds like, oh, it's just a wonderful compass for, you know, it's the infrastructure, it's our switches, it's our access points. It is the licenses, it's the rest, it's the foundation for how we get information for our students. And what happens is we find that the federal government has us do a competitive bidding process. So there is a very rigid process in order for us to select a vendor. And we have to ensure that we follow them step by step and there's timelines, et cetera. And what we're showing here, we think is, once you have your proposal up there, what type of work you want in the vendor, you have 28 days for vendors to submit their proposals. So we collect all of the proposals and then the S E C has us do a matrix. And the top points worth is price. And then we get some flexibility of giving the other friends here. Every vendor that's selected to do the work for fee rate has to go through this bidding process. And it's incredibly rigid and structured. So instead of 28 days for vendors to submit proposals, and then we present this to the vendors so that they will verify that we've activated this process. So I have bid from 2024. And what we see is we had a number of bids from vendors for replacing wireless access points in about six or seven of our schools and switches. And it was also relocation and the accident, had a minimum health card load, loser room. We got his hangover, he couldn't do it right. And there was some fiber damage, so we had to have that moved together. So what we found, this is just a demonstration, was that a lot of vendors could just send for materials. And so the majority of these schools, like they're much smaller and enough, but we didn't include installation, configuration, the things that we needed, the fiber repair. So we were able to put all of the submissions and use the story. And some of the criteria that I've had people love, for instance, that the vendor attended the walkthrough. If the vendor doesn't attend the walkthrough, we have no idea what we really need done. So that was one of the criteria that we did. Here's another one, the cybersecurity pilot program. That is also federally funded. So anything that we tried to purchase for our cybersecurity company has to go through this bidding process as well. This was for the student M F A, and it backed up on the basis of both the vendors submitting proposals and we use the matrix and that is a way to ensure that we're being clear with our funding, with our selection of vendors. One of the other things that we have is student devices. We always look for price, we look for commodity, quality, warranty, protection. What we, we currently go through I T C F zero access. And this is because they provide us with full care. What that means is our service comes green with every week. Picks up all the broken devices out of the process and drops off all the repaired devices. If we didn't have that service, we would be sending individual boxes to different vendors for the order forward for C N. So one of the reasons we said that on top of making sure that they provide the package, et cetera, is that they have a service that, that we can't find any other company that actually offers. And it's fantastic because we are being able to sustain our devices. Much longer, we're getting devices and things to do faster. So that is how. And then one other thing I want to note is, we have, regardless of self-employment, we have 196 members working. Anytime we have a project, anytime we might change, we put, we, we once a month, but we also have a message board. And it's always like, oh, where are you going with the computer class? Who are you going to store access and fill up? And there's 196 local technology directors, media participants, that will share information if they've had a bad experience with a vendor, they've had a break in students with a vendor. This has been so valuable because you really get a sense of how to work for schools in our area. And if you've been on the, so you can step in and make some decisions.
And then just quickly, you know, piggybacking from what Kim was saying in regards to collaboration, we're working with other directors from other districts. You know, we're actually a district, we have an administration committee. Where we're collaborating and trying to find solutions for safety and security that they're flying. And obviously, we're trying to temping with Kim and her Director C, you know, like, to get more information, to see what are the other, as well. Also, we use purchasing cooperatives. We started using, you know, the natural, we had used waters for us, but basically, it's kind of an intergovernmental collaboration called, it's the Illinois Purchasing Act. Purchasing cooperatives create contracts through public and competitive associations and government entities. And then use those contracts to purchase goods and services. So basically, you still have to follow a bidding process. Or someone does, but within those purchasing cooperatives, they have done the work for you or more than they should. And then we can utilize those awards for purchasing items for the district. So any proposed purchases by purchasing cooperative are presented to the Board of Education for approval, no matter what. Even though they went through the bidding process, the Board of Education is the ultimate approver of any purchase. A lower example of the purchasing cooperative, Illinois Bid Five. That is where we typically buy the district vehicles for agents. Amian Partners, I heard Ms. Lesham speaking about this playground. We use Amian Partners to be able to purchase the canopy and all those other items that may not have a playground. We just said it was a better more intense object and the button harnessing, it looks great. And then we also, our partners in Fort Smith, and then school ability helping to walk around. I will open up, this is our partner, Chirulo.
Ernie, thank you. I for one took advantage of the district vision program. See the board just fine. At least we eat it that way. So we're clear on that. But that said, so, one of the great things about the Department of Special Education is that we don't do anything in isolation. So everything is a collaborative effort. And so we have the opportunity to talk to so many people and work with so many people. So when we identify any contracted staff services, we're not doing it alone. So what do we do? So annually, the Director of Special Education, he's a good looking guy, he's twenty-two, I've never met him. He meets with his Assistant Director, also a really good guy, Mike Lord. He meets with the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. He meets with the Assistant Superintendent of, with their recent title change, Business and Financial Services. A bunch of people meet with the principals and all of our special education staff and our administration. We go back with the special coordinators and we look at the numbers. And then we have to sort of make a guesstimate of what we're gonna need program wise across the district. The example is sometimes, you know, we, we look at how to pool our resources. We don't have a giant district, we're in a big living district. So we can't offer all the programs and all of our buildings, but we try to keep kids in their homeschool as much as possible, giving them those equitable services across the district. So we meet every single year and identify where kids homeschool, what level of special education services do they need and support? And then we start identifying what programs are gonna be needed. So then we make recommendations for programming and then we try to fill those positions. Well, we make recommendations for programming based on our existing staff. And we start with that. Looking for vacancies are there? Who's retiring? What needs to be filled there and even from there. If we identify that new positions are recommended, our Board of Education was very kind. Last year, we identified we had additional students that needed an intensive level of support. So we opened an additional I C P classroom, which in our program, we showed it with autism affective disorders and needing a little more support. So we opened an extra class based upon our need. In 10 years, if we don't have that need, we're gonna have more classrooms. So we're always looking and adjusting that. However, anytime we recommend a new position, we have to write a proposal. Once again, Andrew Lucy, stage left, Andrew Carey, stage left, Andrew John Hudson, Andrew Mike Lord, and Andrew, all of you all. That's the four of them, all of you all. And then we make a proposal and you either approve it or don't approve it. And then we start doing that. What is factor due to that? Legal and compliance factors, of course, are governed by the Illinois State Board of Ed and its adherence to the Individual Disability Education Act, O C R, file of four things of that nature. And then we have our legal and compliance factors for the interview process. So we follow the directives, the, the, the districts, interview process. We look at, we look at frontline or A S O P, which is our management system. And when we look at A S O P and frontline, our management system, we, we find the names who apply to these positions. And then the first thing we do is your licensure, certification, background checks, are we communicate to Human Resources, we say, is Eric Chirulo qualified for the job on paper? So we do that, we get approved for that, that's fantastic. And then they, we bring them in for an interview. If we don't have enough applicants, which does sometimes happen, then we start reaching out to contract agencies to fill out the positions. And what we do if we reach out to an agency, we end up getting a master service agreement which outlines what rates are, who's responsible for what, who can do what, and try to match that as closely to what we're asking the staff to do as possible. Some contracts have what the rates are, some are a little different or give us a range depending on the user. And then we look at how that complies with the needs we need. We look at financial budget considerations and again, stage left. We talked to Ms. Moreno, we talked to Board of Education, we talked to our Superintendent, and talked about where is that money gonna come from to apply for those lines? Does it come from local, does it come from grants? We had that social emotional grant, the last couple of years, we were able to have additional. We were able to have those additional social workers and councilors in our district that resulted in our certification and our business office, Human Resources, superintendent, we were able to maintain many of those additional positions. But financially, we couldn't afford all of them when that grant went away. When we do look at contracts, we also look at what it's like, what are the terms of what apply our options? So sometimes we are able to find a candidate who already recruited and applied to us. And at the end of the year, these needs are fantastic. And then some of them have more favorable or less favorable buyout or onboarding arrangements with us. We look at strategic and programming alignment, how does this align with the district goals? How does it align with the student I P goals and how does it align with home schools? We look at enrollment, staffing ratios, and what are the things we look for? How many students are in a class, what's the type of class? What are our numbers look like? If there's a mid-year change because of enrollment, we might get those sort of things as well. This year, we also added a component that actually many of our contracted agencies that were working with, we're actually pretty happy with it and are encouraging their other districts to do as well now, is we added them to our evaluation, our, our evaluation framework. And the goal is that staff will evaluate under the district's approved performance evaluation system so that we can ensure compliance as well as equitable level of service delivery. Because we want them to perform as ease to the level of our excellent teachers that provide the regular basis. We do have a number of staffing agencies that we do use, they're listed here. The 2025 for crime fight hires, our chemists, our pathologists are currently providing, are how through contracts. We do have one school nurse, which is an improvement. Couple of years ago, several of our school nurses were contracted, but over time, we did a greater volume out, we left, and then we were able to recruit our own direct hires. We do have five school psychologists, five special education teachers. And then we do have six regular education teaching positions that weren't filled, which I know we should definitely put a lead on for those. definitely need on for those, and two bilingual teachers, which is a, 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 a red special ed on for those as well.
And then lastly, we do also try to see what companies we have here in our district of, 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 you know, communities, and Doyle and Elsie, rather than, and, and dress with. So we support them 100%. We have youth and parents, and currently we have four players, or five, six, maximum teams, Hill and Tate, Minar, and Presswood, Tom Markshone, Bigger, Semanty, A, 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 Flare, Academy, and Naval Systems. We, in regards to some of these vendors, we've been meeting them for a very long, long time, and I've been here. In conclusion, to provide transparency, all documentation for contracts are provided through the board agendas for review and approved, approved contracts are recorded in a couple of minutes. So probably four to thirty, currently working diligently to ensure their best compliance and physical stability. So is there anyone that has questions?
Thank you. I, I do have a question, that I can make other members of the board at our office as well. I, I feel that, thank you, I have to, to end this agenda, because of course, the board is aware, and we're going to, um, it's important to understand how we need to, this right now, and then of course, sending out any vendor, any department, to study the, the evaluation, and the, 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 that helps the board understand everything that goes into the chapter, so we're, so I appreciate that. Um, I could, if, if it was minimal, if that, um, you know, five, um, that, that helps you, um, to, to, to.
Yes, so if we can, uh, if we can, here they changed it from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars. There are exceptions, exceptions, in regards to certain types of work, where it, and it's not a, 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 a model of things where it's changing the side of the, of, uh, the, let's say, um, a special or, if you know, a building, we can go off the, 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 the hours.
And then, quick question, does the district have, I think we say, there's vendors in East China, beginning, because there's, there's kind of true business, so, so, for vendors, what's, what's that about?
Um, in regards, I don't consider, I don't, for, better, I know we, kind of, just, like, a lot of vendors that are school-based. And then obviously, in regards to, uh, operations and maintenance, it goes as to, at the need of the district. We, if there's, so, you know, ODP, I don't know, but we, you know, so, certain teams, and so, just a variety of certain, uh, vendors that are more small things, when we can get our, 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 I don't think it's quite, but we need to, to, to.
Anyone have, have any questions? Maybe someone else.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to have items G and H removed from consent for further discussion in public court.
So G, uh, do you, do you, do you say that?
Yes.
And G, uh, can we just contact everybody, and, and, that's why?
Yes.
Okay, so you will, you, okay, that's, that's, I'm, I'm, okay. Uh, may I have a motion to, 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 that's, being, uh, five, A, C, D, E, F, G, H? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a call, please, for motion.
Yes, ma'am. For Pina?
Yes.
For Warren?
Yes.
If you're not answering, yes, for your role?
Yes.
Let's begin.
Yes.
Consent agenda, and I see H are approved.
Okay, uh, we would, uh, return to, or pick up on our, um, consent agenda, item G, Resolution 4026, that, zero four six, if you can, description, and you may, please, if you want. May I have a motion to, 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 please?
I'll make a motion.
And I have a question. Okay. So this is, I have a topic for, for discussion.
I have several questions. With iReady, MyPath, and Comic Academy already being subscriptions utilized within our district, what are the benefits of purchasing BlueStreak?
BlueStreak is a, um, technical fluency program. I first came across this as the regional superintendent's office during the demonstration with other districts in the area, if you didn't look at it. We were looking for something that would fill the gap for after-school program. We have historically looked for time within our school day to provide tier-two math interventions, and found that it's a little bit of a struggle. And so we are using after-school grant funding to provide, um, tier-two math interventions, beginning on December 2nd. Students, um, invitation only, tier-two math, that's based on, um, the branch and mine data, are invited to attend. We have just under 200 students right now who are invited to the program, fully funded from our after-school grant program from the state. And we look at this as an option to supplement, not just the iReady, as you mentioned, but we also purchase another quarter from the Math Institute. And so this will allow those teachers who are teaching the after-school program to have an array of resources to choose from and select what's best for their current
So, thank you for that answer. Some of my other questions were just that one answered too. So I guess what I'm still struggling to understand is what the real difference is. We already have three subscriptions, the iReady, the MyPath, and the Comic Academy. What can this BlueStreak do differently that those three we already have don't toward candidates?
Comic Academy does them often necessarily with data and a small group intervention and all you build in. We're looking, because it's such a short amount of span time for our teachers, it's just two hours per week, minimize their planning and to make it just ready to go. And so this is turnkey. There's a very quick assessment, it is adaptive, it places students into the correct level, it's highly engaging, and it's also something that's a little bit more motivational. I know it's hardly, it's a little bit tough to get kids to come after school, but it's not the same thing they're using in their tier-one universal instruction. This is something that is different and will hopefully motivate students to come and try something new and exciting. The beauty of this is also we could potentially, if things go well in this after-school trial period, we could build this into our summer school program as well in order to enhance that. So it's simply looking to supplement, not replace tier-one universal instruction.
Any questions, ma'am?
Sure.
I'd like that, I'd like that it includes pencil paper math and addition to history and math, as you know, like, pencil paper is better than it is running, like, how, what percentage of this is on a computer?
So it's about 50/50%. It also includes lesson plans, as Mr. Burmacher says, and a consumable work check for students, roughly about $12 per student, again funded through the grant. And so there will be supplemental lessons, so, and there will be small group lessons that teachers can have handy based on student performance, but then it also has a consumable as well. You could take a look at other districts in the area that are using it. We found that in our area, we've got LGEN 6, Forest Ridge 142, CPS, South Village 168, and Jelling at 86 are all using it as well.
Is the hope that in this after-school program, the students that will be participating to bring their math score or level up to
Yes.
grade level proficiency, I guess?
Yeah, and so our teachers have expressed a dire concern about student fact fluency and computation fluency. And so fluency is really just more than just that fondity in fact knowledge, like growth to memorization of facts, it's also in the idea that they can totally switch between strategies in order to problem solve. And so this program, I have white papers also, like, shared with you, is research and evidence base in providing just that, allowing students to become proficient in the right strategies in addition to that fondity in fact.
What features do our, you mean, some actual programs that train, how to use this?
Yes.
Can you feature other different learning of apps?
Yeah.
Interesting to throw, any sort of sign things?
Yes, so we have initially, would like to subscribe to two professional developments for the after-school program for our teachers. The first is tentatively approved, scheduled for November 19th next week, and that would be an in-person professional development for our staff, and kind of give them a launch initial overview of everything, just to get them started and to fully understand the features of the program and its usage. And then midway through the year, we'd like to provide a virtual professional development in order to help them better utilize the data that is coming out of all of the reports, and then to better filter for instruction, moving forward. Initially, we have two professional developments, professional development for our staff.
What grade are you in this?
We're purchasing it for grades two through eight, which is what our after-school career program will focus on, to do the, 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 the.
Have any personal questions? I, um, do I have a motion to approve, agenda, the, the, how, the, the, yeah? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
If you want, please.
Is that a negative?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Burmacher, yes, is it?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Burmacher?
Yes.
And G is approved.
Do you have a higher page, Resolution 4026, that, that, zero four seven, if you can, if you can, that, 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 that,[1317.41] and that connection just because their time is spent on a multitude of other projects and, and focuses. But, um, I, I presume we could probably do that, but we've never attempted to do that since because they generally have a clientele that is, um, quite busy in that.
So, please correct me if I'm wrong. You had mentioned that, Miss Daniels, as was proposed tonight, is wanting to be paid with grant funds.
Yeah.
What about, um, the other two that you had mentioned? Are those paid for by the district or are those also paid for in grant funds?
Those are paid through, um, for, uh, all of the consultants have paid through grant funding. Um, two grants in particular, well, health fund consultants generally. Um, I have a Title I-A, which is geared for students for development. For Title II, which is solely for teaching retention and professional development. And we are following in compliance with all of those very requirements. And we utilize, um, funds to not just provide the consultants, but then to pay for the stipends and the benefits for professional development offerings that we're able to provide to our staff. Teachers that express an interest in these assessments to have professional development during the school day oftentimes. And so the beauty in having these consultants come in is they are truly dedicated to supporting our staff right within their, their school day. They join them during, um, common plan times and they can pre-brief and debrief lessons. Um, they can go into classrooms and partner with teachers and model instructional strategies. Um, we can oftentimes use a hybrid model and have them zoom in with us through Google Meet or through Zoom. And they can follow up and provide very quick questions, answers to questions that teachers might have. Um, and so we do our very best to provide a variety of professional development services for our staff. Do a variety of, um, others.
I just want to go back. I just, I, you know, third, I think it's, um, is possible this, the addition of this third consultant is at no expense to the district. This is purely paid from grant funds. Okay, thank you. What are these consultants able to do that's different than a curriculum coordinator that we already have in-house in our, sort of, our just?
Sure. Um, once again, they dedicate full time to the in schools, um, in classrooms. Um, they work, um, most of them, I wouldn't say all of them, just one, who they, who will work, um, with, um, organizations, including the state, that are at a level that our coordinators take it out and do something because they're working on other projects or doing other things. And so, um, for example, Sharon Rapp works very closely with the state. She has served on numerous committees, um, through the Illinois State Board of Education. Um, has worked closely with the Illinois assessment readiness and the, um, test questions, assessment questions. Um, she works with, uh, she's a consultant with the regional office of, uh, the superintendents, uh, across the state. She, um, works with a variety of other districts. Um, Dr. Baker, um, works with the, um, NGSS standards. Uh, helps to write those standards and can provide a level of expertise, um, that is unequalled in regards to science. Um, and then Mr. Neal, who we're hoping to bring on, um, is a board, National Department of Board certified teacher. She worked with West Chicago Regional Superintendent's Office. Um, she is, um, the director of the Illinois Civics Hub. She has served as, uh, the director, Board of Directors of the National Council of Social Studies. And so, um, I think that while our coordinators do an absolutely phenomenal job of facilitating loose-on-the-ground, um, collaborations, teacher institute days, um, and the everyday work of curriculum, um, the consultants that we bring in are highly vetted and provide a level of expertise that we honestly wish we could provide, but since we aren't capable of doing, um, doing it all, or if that provides any more clarity, but, uh, the level of, of the intensity and the rigor, I think that they provide the type of, um, that they're, uh, level of.
To me, it just seems like we have curriculum consultants, um, curriculum coordinators, excuse me, in our district. And we're undermining their area of expertise by hiring these coordinators. Because their jobs, quite frankly, sound, sound very similar. I'm not doubting these coordinators' qualifications. What I'm doubting is, um, our curriculum coordinators feeling devalued because we keep essentially outsourcing for, for more. So, I'm, I guess I'm still very unclear what our district curriculum coordinators are doing differently than what these consultants, that this is now going to be the second one I know has come up since I was a junior.
I do have, uh, some, like, asking the coordinators to speak to that?
Sure.
Okay, so this is Terry Campos. She is the In the Family, Daring, and Social Science lawyer.
Would you like coming up with a date before? Thank you. Thank you. I have the opportunity to share a little bit about my job and, um, my, um, role with working with a coordinator. So, um, this is my second year at the ELA, which is a social coordinator for the district. Um, I previously served as an instructional coach for ten years. Um, I, so I guess my role is a little different. Initially, um, coming on with this role, I thought that it would be more, a little bit more of, um, direct PE and things like that, but it, it's not, and that's not a bad thing. You know, we do a lot more, I guess you'd say like, sometimes means of coordinating things like after-school program, summer school program, um, coordinating different, um, different things. I do work with the teachers on like, like start Monday. A lot of times I will work with particularly the middle school teams. Um, so I actually last year had the opportunity to go to several different social studies, professional development sessions through our local regional, uh, regional office of education. And that was where I actually met or got a chance to experience professional development with Mr. Neal. Um, and it, I found it to be incredibly informative, um, even for me as somebody who's been working in the industry for twenty years. So, I actually kind of kept turning into that pocket and then brought it forward to the curriculum department to say, I think this is somebody that is not only probably knowledgeable, but has the ability to get into the classrooms, like Ms. Del Rosso was saying, on a regular basis, that I am not always able to. Um, in that way, I work directly with, so our ELA consultants, I work directly with her. In fact, she was just here today working with our instructional coaches. So, discussing what I would like them to work on. So, it's not, I don't see it as, um, they're devaluing my job or that, um, that I don't know it. It's just that I work directly with them to help roll it out in a way that I just am not able to in my role.
A little.
I feel like consultants and coordinator are just two different roles and expertise. It's like principal, teacher, A, right? Like everyone has their own role and expertise and everything, right?
Yes. So, I, I will foresee what that different, what that consultant is going to do per se with. So, I would say, hey, this is where we're, you know, the teachers, um, are requesting that they would like an area in for professional development, or here's what our data is showing. So, this is what I need us to work with the teachers or the staff on. And I kind of help them develop what they're going to work on and kind of send them out with the teachers and in the buildings, because when we bring them in, they have the time to do that. But we do work together, the, um, the consultants and myself and the other curriculum coordinator. We work together hand in hand to help make sure that things are being rolled out the right way.
Um, the other thing too about having a consultant in the classrooms is not a value to them. They can come into the classroom, work side by side with teachers, focus on students, and it creates a level of comfort that if Terry isn't there or somebody else, it does feel a little bit like district offices and their employees can absolutely seek, you know, a side-by-side learning experiences and that's going to be natural. And, um, we don't feel like some of their, if we go back and they're, okay, on that evaluation person, you know, struggled with the content or they couldn't deliver it or the students didn't feel engaged. Um, and I do think that that also helps to make them learn a little bit, you know, rich. You know, and you see Sharon in the classroom, she rolls in with that suitcase and Maggie comes out and they consider it amazing, the teachers love her. Um, and so I do think, you know, there is, just another voice to, to help us reach students and making a impact in the classroom.
Any other questions? Here, um, may I have a motion to, um, item five, page two, I think we talked about, um, the other one. Okay, motion?
I'll submit it.
We'll talk to you, Mr. Bernard.
Um, Superintendent Gitts?
Yes.
Superintendent Gitts?
Yes.
Superintendent?
Yes.
Do you get me?
Yes.
Yes.
That we have a new business, um, for both and policy development. And, um, this is a discussion item. Um, I, um, had this item added to the agenda, um, for the purpose of heading to an agreement on identifying and aligning four policy priorities with this for your twenty-six budget before passing the law, to ensure that we have resources allocated to making progress on set identified priorities. Um, in essence, um, I think the board consider, like, what are the priorities of the, 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 um? Um, so, and, you know, once we have the budget, the board will have taken accountability before the public for defending our tax dollars. Um, so I am asking tonight for the board to consider two policy priorities that we can put some parameters around. Uh, the first being the urgent security, that's building security and security staffing. And then the second item being staffing in general, particularly ensuring staff fulfillment and retention across all departments. Um, so I, I think on here, I'd be in the discussion. I'll just make the case, um, for building security, security staffing. We've heard, um, uh, we've heard from our experts, um, on our staff that we know what security policies we need to implement to, um, to be most impactful. So, we're starting to do the security, construction, and staffing. And we also know that this for your twenty-six budget right now does not adequately provide for moving the progress in that area. So, I would like to propose that the board, um, set the policy to have a, a certain amount of additional discretionary funds towards meeting our security, construction, and staffing goals. Um, then furthermore, with regard to staffing in general, this is, um, a really important area. Um, I know, I, the parent has been concerned about staffing shortages and, um, the line of staff orientation, as, as in addition to possibly additions for district, um, staff morale, sort of teachers. And, um, so I would propose that around the twenty twenty-six, focus for your twenty-six budget, uh, we, I propose to add and provide, um, a sort of review of staffing policies, strategies, or performance, uh, over the last four years passed for the purposes of over the year, we had to develop a new strategy to ensure staff fulfillment and retention. So, I'll sort of look back to make sure that we're doing everything we can to incorporate in a very positive direction. Um, it, so, I, I'll also add that, um, that of course, um, I feel maybe that a district law of control and objective assessment for staffing policies and practices, um, will help us retain our staff and maybe, uh, higher. So, I, I would invite the board to, um, open this to a discussion. I don't want to be lying, quite frankly. Um, but with, with some proposal that we, um, we set our, our highest priorities on security and staffing. And then, um, we can set a special board meeting to formalize these policies since we canceled on them tonight and then subsequently go on the package to this for your twenty-six budget. Are there any questions, discussions, alternate people?
I think these are great things to start focusing on. I think that all of this has really been kind of the message that communities have given back to us, um, security specifically.
I think we need to add, um, I don't know what word this, but I know that we know, we, we, like, prioritize that. And I think it affects the budget and the future, but, so I couldn't agree with you more. The only reason I didn't add that to this list here is because I know we have to, um, somebody's assessment is underway. And once we have that, we'll be able to make more informed decisions. Any other questions on this? All right, um, what I will do this, this new business, not this agenda item. I will work with our attorneys, how they're, um, getting to turn this into a, sort of, how this proposal and come back, I guess, um, soon, um, maybe with a special meeting so that we can perform with this and track, track them, this, this, this. All right, thank you. Um, moving on then to agenda item seven, action item. Uh, the first one is direct designated votes at the designated person. Can I have a motion to be given to the floor?
I'll be ready.
Thank you. Have a second.
I'll second.
Um, so we, um, I believe the board has the, the two different options here. This is to, um, um, give guidance to designated, uh, golden winner, uh, back to, uh, end goal conferences. Um, there are options here, like, do, um, to vote only in accordance with the consensus, um, or to, um, to allow them to vote in the end on the consensus at the board table. And then have a preference or approval for which option we would. Uh, here, I need to also vote option one, which is to vote in accordance with, um, consensus.
Vote in accordance, do you know what you're voting on?
The, um,
Do you know what you, uh, I think it's a voting?
The, uh, attachment was in the, in the board cabinet. Um, so it's, um, it's to, I gave up the, um, I didn't get it, but I gave up the constitution. Uh, so I have, we have recommended, um, are we, we're actually changing on this, whether we will be before the package? Okay, and Dr. Ginnis offered his then tomorrow, and, you know, to the board for anyone who, like, would see that again. In this particular case, um, Did I convey the motion?
We're in discussion, that's what I would say.
I, 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 any other, um, any, any non-agreement?
Yeah.
We have a board member, I can remember.
I'll.
Um, then I, um, we have the motion to, uh, point, uh, to, to, to vote to be, um, um, I'm sorry, we are going with the second option. to vote in accordance with, I'm sorry, we are going with the second action. I'm giving behind the, 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 and any discussions with great, and there's one that I have to, to, to. I think that if you were to be ready to be a, to vote, I think that if somebody was in the session, they would certainly, they would certainly report and, and discuss that. I, I just, I just.
Do you get here?
Yes.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Do you get it?
Yes.
Do you want to?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda item two, to close the twenty-six pack, I would like to talk to it. Can I have a motion to, to, to?
I'll make a motion.
So this is a, a project to, oh, to, to, with my three and winners, who are happy to have a one point budget, others require any questions about this?
We need to, not a question, we need to start somewhere, you know, these buildings are very aged. They don't start moving forward. The project is going to cost more to get completed.
Yeah, I agree.
Nothing going down, it's everything going down. These buildings that you mentioned earlier, very aged and lacking repairs for many years in previous administrations, for what reason?
Are there any other questions for discussion about this item?
Our security, the, the.
Sure, we're here to talk.
Sorry, what was the question? Security, the, 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 and, 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 and,